Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this Administrative Informal and Workshop Session on Monday, June 9th, 2025, to order at 4:00 P. M. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair, present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. That brings us to School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Do any board members have anything to report? Ms. Rogers? Sorry about that. Our screens are... Okay. I do. So, due to the elimination of resolutions, without the full board's ability to discuss and vote, I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the following recognitions and celebrations within our community. In the month of May, the community celebrated Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month to take time to reflect and celebrate the important role that Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders have played in our shared history. The community also celebrated Jewish American Heritage Month to celebrate the rich history, culture, and achievements of Jewish Americans. The community further celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week to acknowledge and appreciate the vital role teachers play in shaping the minds and futures of students. The community celebrated Mother's Day to express gratitude, appreciation, and affection to our community's mothers and recognize their contributions to families and society. And finally, in the month of May, the community celebrated School Nurse Appreciation Day to recognize and celebrate the contributions of school nurses in promoting student health, safety, and academic success. In the month of June, the community will recognize National Cancer Survivors' Day honoring cancer survivors, raising awareness about cancer survivorship, and supporting those who have been affected by cancer. The community will recognize the strength, resilience, and hope of cancer survivors. It will also recognize, I'm sorry, the community will also be celebrating Father's Day to honor and celebrate the role of fathers and father figures in our lives, offering an opportunity to express appreciation and gratitude for their love, care, and support. The community will further celebrate Juneteenth to commemorate the announcement by Union General Gordon Granger on June 19th, 1865, and recognize and celebrate the end of slavery in the United States. And in the month of June, the community will also be celebrating Pride, which commemorates the Stonewall Riots of 1969, a pivotal event, I'm sorry, a pivotal event for civil rights movement for the LBGQ+ community. And Pride also celebrates the achievements and contributions of the LBGQ+ community and is a call for greater unity, visibility, and equality. Thank you. Do any other board members have anything to report? Seeing none, we will now welcome Joel Andrus from Kimber Consulting for a legislative update.
Good afternoon. It is good to see you all, and I also want to say to all of our seniors and our families out there, congratulations. This is a great week to be here. I know it is so exciting. All the hard work that they've put in, it is a great accomplishment and very proud of what everyone has done and look forward to seeing and hearing about their achievements in the future. So, this is a great week to be, great week to be here and excited for them. I'm gonna, as always, give you a quick recap of where things stand after the legislative session and kind of a preview of some of the things that are ongoing throughout the summer, as well as a sort of snapshot of what might be happening in November, because I think, as you all know, it is a big election here in Virginia. So... Let's see. Oh. Okay. All right. So, backing up real quick, just kind of really big picture, it was a short session, which means we had no budget. However, if you followed the news at the beginning of the year, session began with a water crisis in the city of Richmond. Believe it or not, we really need running water to host public meetings. It's pretty important for things like fire suppression systems and restrooms and all types of things. So, session technically started on time, but everyone immediately went home, because, again, there was no water. So, we actually started a few days late, which kind of made everything a little bit more truncated than usual during session. No changes in leadership during legislative session. We continue to see divided government with the governor, lieutenant governor, Attorney General, all Republicans, and the legislature, both the House and the Senate, with a narrow control by Democrats. It is a non-budget year, so we're in the middle of our biennial budget. So, we did not technically actually have to pass a budget this year, even though they always make revisions to the budget every single year. We'll talk a little bit more about that. There are some kind of ongoing concerns about what is happening. Again, elections kind of playing this big part of what is happening out there in terms of some bills and the outcome of some bills. And then, the state is continuing to look at how to respond to the changing federal landscape and what those impacts may mean for Virginia, specifically what they mean for Virginia in terms of state revenue. I'm not going to focus on this, but just as a reminder, House Control, 51 Democrats, 49 Republican Speaker of the House is Delegate Don Scott, who's from Portsmouth. And this slide is actually a little bit out of date as of just a few days ago, where the minority leader actually has now changed from Todd Gilbert in Chanadoa to Terry Kilgore from Scott County. So, that just actually just happened recently. Senate narrowed Democratic control by, again, 2119. Scott Servell from Fairfax is the Senate Majority Leader, and the Chair of the Senate Finance Committee, as well as Pro Tem, is Senator Louise Lucas. Kind of interesting that not only does Hampton Roads kind of have a pretty significant presence in terms of leadership in the General Assembly, but actually specifically from the city of Portsmouth. I think this is kind of an interesting slide to kind of set up a little bit of the dynamics for session. This slide shows governors' vetoes for the last several governors. And as you can see, when you look at previous governors, we've seen more vetoes this past couple of years than we've seen from many governors in the past. I think the stat I heard is maybe 20% or something of the bills that the legislature sent to the governor, he ended up vetoing. Again, this is a little bit of those partisan dynamics between both the House, Senate, and the administration. Like I mentioned at the beginning, we're in the middle of a biennial budget, and so we have seen strong revenues in Virginia. That continues to happen. We have pretty conservative budgeting. However, for several years now, particularly staff of both the Senate and House committees have been warning a little bit about ongoing revenue concerns. And so, they created a greater focus on one-time spending versus ongoing costs. The concern that is out there is if we continue to spend on ongoing costs, eventually our revenues and our spending will take up, catch up with each other. This is sort of a short-term problem. It gets better as we get to the, to the out years. So, again, one, focus on one-time spending. Also, with the, I'm sorry, that slide got a little bit cut off there, but with, with elections coming up, there was a focus on tax breaks became a priority for both the General Assembly and the Governor's Office, which we'll talk about here in a second as well. And I would say that the, the concern about spending has been talked about for several years now and is not necessarily a direct result of any changes at the federal level. So, I'm gonna talk about some education funding specifics, and I'm gonna put them in three categories, kind of technical updates that we see every year, some policy updates that the General Assembly took and enacted, as well as a few things specific to the Department of Ed that school divisions and everyone sort of needs to be aware of. I think many of these you already, you already know about as you work through your budget process, but I'll kind of highlight them as I go through this presentation anyway. A couple of quick technical updates. As you can see, sales tax revenue was increased. School enrollment was increased, so ADM is up. Obviously, depending on your school division, you may or may not get more money out of the ADM. English learner proficiency, there was some significant dollars for that. This was based upon legislation that was passed during the 2024 General Assembly session, so really paying for policies that the General Assembly enacted. And then, an increase lottery revenues over the forecast, and as you can see what those numbers are right there. Looking at a couple of major policy initiatives, and again, I think you probably know about all these, but I'll just highlight some of them. A thousand dollar bonus for school personnel. So, these are SOQ positions, so teachers and those support staff. There was a, just as a reminder, there was a raise given at the beginning of the biennium for both years, so there was no changes to that raise that was given. We finally funded the support cap after, I think, 16 years of asking for the support cap to get funded. However, they funded it by putting in place a support cap that funds the support cap, which is great, because they've now actually recognized, fully recognized, all those support positions. The challenge is, we're gonna have to be constantly looking at the ratio to make sure that the General Assembly continues to fund the support cap at where it should be. Prior to 2008, they funded on a prevailing cost, and they have not gone back to that. There was a special ed add-on, which is for, as you can see, for Level 1 and Level 2 supports. A couple of other items is school construction, a little bit more money in school construction. Again, this number is so big on a statewide basis, probably doesn't significantly reduce anyone's school division's construction or maintenance costs. Certainly very helpful for smaller urban rural school divisions. And then, the one thing that we did not see any movement on, even though we saw some policies related to it, is changes related to the Joint Subcommittee on Education Funding. As we've been talking about for the last couple of years, the Joint Legislative Audit Review Commission came out with several recommendations, 20 or so of them, about changes and updating the state funding formula. The General Assembly has a special subcommittee working through what those changes may or may not be, and they have not made any long-term policy changes around that. I would say, though, that the support cap and the special ed add-on were part of the JLR discussion and recommendations, but the bigger ones dealing with formulas has, have not really been enacted or, or even discussed significantly at this point, waiting for that work of the joint subcommittee. A couple of funding proposals related to DOE that are just worth noting, the SOL contract, and we're gonna talk about this here in a second, too, relating to the SOL legislation, because some of this stuff works together. Extends the contract through 2027 to allow the DOE to procure a new contract. Currently, Pearson has that contract. So, we need to, as, as a DOE and as a state, need to really think about what we want our SOLs to look like moving into the future. Additional help around math improvement program, this was sparked by legislation from this past session with a really focus on math. A statewide LMS was continued through the year, I think it's about $5 million. And then, other enhancements to the Virginia IEP. Last year, you may recall, there was legislation that made a number of changes to Virginia's special ed program, including enhancements to the statewide IEP. The legislation does not require school divisions to use the state IEP, as is currently the case, but they're trying to beef up the state IEP, so it is a more useful resource for school divisions, specifically for those who have opted not to use the statewide IEP. Moving on to legislation, we saw about 2,000 bills, not including resolutions, get introduced this year. Roughly 900 of them were sent to the Governor's Desk. We are also, of those 2,000 bills, there's about 300, a little more than 300 or so of those, that we are tracking that impacted school divisions. So, you can see a really a large number of bills out there that are introduced, impact schools or local governments in some way or another. Because some of those bills also had to deal with FOIA or other types of things that do impact local school divisions and school boards. So, a lot of, lot of work that gets done in a very, very short period of time. Here's kind of a snapshot of what that looks like. I like, I like to think about it in terms of, in Virginia, most bills get hearings, at least one, and so you, the General Assembly has to get through about 100 bills a day in order to stay on track. And obviously, this year, with losing a couple of days because of the water crisis, that, that pace had to speed up even a little bit more. So, a couple of highlights out of those 300 bills that we are tracking this past session. One is the standards of learning reform. You might have been, there's been a number of articles about this pretty recently. This is something that we knew was going, coming as a pretty big issue from this past session. The, this legislation does a lot of different things, including probably the, the thing you've heard about the most, which is requiring standards of learning to count as 10% of the grade. They also require SOLs to be given within the last two weeks of school. SOLs have to be on a 100-point scale, among other things. What the legislation also does is it makes some significant changes to how SOLs are administered. And so, we, really, it's important to think about all those policy changes, like 10% or two weeks, kind of in conjunction with some of the other work that is being done with SOL redesign. It also allows for school divisions to develop their local assessments for some SOLs. And so, there's a lot of different pieces in it. The legislation is delayed for a year, so it does not go into effect for one whole year. And then, another big portion of that legislation also has what's called a reenactment clause on it, which means, and before it goes into law, the General Assembly has to vote on it one more time. So, there's a lot of work that still is going to likely get done on this legislation, and none of it is going to affect right away. So, we've been talking, Dr. Robertson and I had some conversations about, you know, what do we want this to look like, since this is kind of the first time it has gone through. I think there's still some more work that needs to be done from a policy standpoint, also from a logistics and practical standpoint around this legislation. And it will certainly be a point of discussion coming up for the 2026 General Assembly Session, without a doubt. Other big piece of legislation, there was, there was a bipartisan bill dealing with cellphone usage. The bill does a couple of things that require school boards to develop a cellphone policy, and I'm gonna get the words not quite exactly right, but that is both age and developmentally appropriate, that restricts cellphone usage to the maximum extent possible from bell to bell. There's a lot of questions about what is age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate, what is restricting the maximum use possible. I think that, based upon talking to others, that gives the school board some leniency of what they may want to do or not do with that cellphone policy. I, so, that is out there now. We've been talking about the delayed accountability system a lot, that, that is going to go into effect next year. There was some legislation to delay that for a year. That did not pass. We did see some really good legislation on CTE licensure that creates new provisional license for teachers who want to go into the CTE field, so that, that is good news for us, something we've been working on for several years now. And then, another bill dealing with making sure that students who are leaving high school are prepared for the next chapter in life, and whether that chapter is employment, going directly into the workforce, making sure they have the skill sets that make them employable, if they're deciding to enlist in one of the armed services and serve our country, there's making sure we're preparing them for that, or if they're looking at a, a, another higher ed institution, making sure that they're prepared for that. So, that is now going to be part of the accountability framework. Work that is, I think, good, something that we, we've been excelling at as well. So, looking forward to seeing some of that stuff beyond the board that is agenda in the, in the coming months and years. A couple of other last-minute things. I think what I just went through were kind of the, the big ones. There's a lot of talk about teacher training. This is something we've been talking about for several years now. There was a bill to limit the teacher training requirements. One of the challenges, it's really focused on limiting more the local side than the state side, because some of those are in statute. We're gonna have to keep working on that piece of legislation. However, it also, there's another piece of legislation that really creates an index of teaching training requirements. One of our challenges is, we don't really know what's out there in terms of what teachers are required to do. So, we're starting to get a lot more data back on that. There was legislation to expand Virtual Virginia to all middle school students. That didn't go anywhere. Some changes to high-quality instructional material. This has DOE creating a new list of high-quality instructional material. It does not require school boards to use their list, but they're gonna be doing more work in that space. Local sales tax for school construction, we've seen those last couple of years. It, it passed, but was vetoed by the governor. We continue to see work around students with disabilities. The Commission on Youth is continuing their study on dispute resolution. So, that is continuing to be an issue. I suspect it will be more significant come 2026. And then, as I mentioned before, all the, the bills dealing with SOQs or education funding reform ended up not passing, waiting for the recommendations and the Joint Subcommittee to continue their work and finish what they're doing. So, I'm gonna pause there, and I can answer questions, or I can kind of continue through and get to the other things. I'm up to you, depending on how you like to...
Mr. Bowen Steele?
Hello. Good evening, afternoon. I'm just a little curious and kind of confused on the cellphone situation. I was under the impression that it was law and that we were pretty much, that was it. We didn't have any way to put our voice in. But, this says here, what I'm reading, is that it's kind of up to the school board to come up with their own...
I, I'm, I might let Ms. Lanetti respond to that, but there's words in that legislation that is things like developmentally appropriate, restrict, maximum extent possible, and I think there, there might be some, some, we, we lay but, leeway by defer to her on that one.
This was an issue, we went, some of us went to the VSBA Law Day, let's say, June 5th, I think, and, no, sorry, May 30th. And this was brought up by Stacy Haney, who's a VSBA Legislative Consultant, and JT Kessler, who's the VSBA Legislative Representative. And they both said the same thing that you're hearing Mr. Andrus talk about, is the fact that's confusing right now. There seem to be a lot of school divisions that are confusing. Way I understood the statutes that went through was that when it said restrict, it was going to leave you, as a school division, some leeway in deciding what to do. There were several amendments on this. One amendment was, there was a subsection C that said nothing here would prohibit you from, you as a school division from making rules that you determine were appropriate for the school day. That was taken out. There was a section talked about prohibition that was taken out, but it left the word restrict in there. So, my assumption with the PRC was that it was going to be left to you to be able to make a decision what you thought was age-appropriate. I will say, this has come up, and we have a long discussion with the Council of School Attorneys. It's really not clear right now whether it means you have the ability to make decisions on there, because we're not clear what the word restrict means. It does talk, continue to talk about making age-appropriate decisions about there and leaving them, but it's not clear on the bell-to-bell when it says restrict, if restrict means completely prohibit. I do think if you completely prohibit, you're not going to have a problem. There is a possibility, if the word restrict is intended to mean absolutely you cannot have it during the school day or bell-to-bell time period, that there might be some argument that that's not what it was intended to be. So, we're not, we have not seen guidance from the Virginia Department of Education right now. Nothing's come down from the Governor's Office. So, the safer plan might be to stick with restrict meaning don't allow it bell-to-bell. But outside the bell-to-bell, like on the bus or after school, if you allow it, you might be able to restrict it there. But unfortunately, I can't give you really good guidance. My, when I was doing the PRC, my, I thought it would be okay for you to do that. I'm not 100% sure that's accurate right now.
Mr. Callen?
Thank you for your report thus far. I look forward to completion of it as well. And I do have a question that would fall under the category of a history review, if you will. Slide number seven makes reference to the lottery revenues being increased, and I'm going to reveal how challenging it is sometimes to remember facts and figures, but my understanding historically is, when the lottery system was introduced, the intent was the revenues that were realized were going to be directed back to the school systems for their needs. Life got in the way, and those rules were changed, and the dollars were directed elsewhere. But it's my understanding that dollars are slowly being returned to the original intent that surrounded the legislation when it was enacted. My question for you, if you have an answer, is if lottery revenues are increasing, do you know how far away or how close we might be getting to what was originally intended, or is there still miles to go before we get there?
Thank you, Mr. Callen. That's a, that's a good question. I don't know if I can give you a specific on kind of what the, if there's, there's a deficit, so to speak. I think what you do see, the lottery funds do go to education. What you see is that lottery funds will, will be used to supplant general fund obligations. And so, while they do go to education, it offsets sometimes what the state would ordinarily put in. And so, that's where you would have to kind of look at what is, what, what, what would it be if the state did 100% of what they said they would do, and then you had the lottery funds also coming fully to K-12? And I don't know what that is. I'll see if I can do a little more digging and figure out what that, what that number would actually look like.
Thank you.
But I think that is also, you know, part of, as we rethink funding formulas in Virginia for K-12, all of these types of things are going into that discussion of what is the general fund obligation to funding the education system in Virginia, and what does that look like, both from a, a policy side and a formula side for individual school districts?
Any information you can return with is greatly appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Melnick?
Well, first, the law did not change for the appropriation of funds from lottery dollars. It was just a recession that, that led that, and I think it was nice to have that money, and I'm glad that it's being reallocated where it's supposed to, and I look forward to that, those numbers increasing. But back to the cellphone policy, when do you think we'll have more clarification from the VDOE? Because school boards are now being tasked with making these decisions, and clearly, there's some ambiguity, which really puts us in a bad, in a bad spot.
I'll be honest, I'm not seeing anything from VDOE. I do know, I'd asked that question of Stacy Haney and JT Kessler, if they knew if anybody was asking for an opinion on it, and right now, they're not aware. But when I spoke with the other school divisions, nobody at this time was overly concerned about where they were going with their policies. So, I don't know when we'll get guidance. But use it with VDOE, it doesn't come out until July sometime when you see the guidance.
Because it, because, I mean, you're, you're pulling language that you've seen that says cellphone usage requires school divisions to develop a policy, and includes the words age and developmentally appropriate, and with some leniency attached to that. And so...
Yeah, I can read you this. Section B of the bill says, "Each school board shall develop, and each public elementary and secondary school shall implement age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate policies relating to student cellphone and smart device possession and use on school board property from bell-to-bell, and such properties shall include..." And it sets out a couple of sections. The first one is one, except is provided subsection four, which has to do with special ed students, restrict student cellphone, smart device possession, use on school board property from bell-to-bell.
Okay.
And then, there was a section that no longer appears in this, and that the final version, sorry, there was another section that talked about, you would not be prohibited from, you would not have to prohibit all use on, nothing prohibits from doing all use on school, bell-to-bell, on school property. That section did not appear in the final version of the bill. So, that, the question is, by not take, by not using the prohibit word, which you've seen before in this bill, by leaving restrict, do they actually mean prohibit for restrict, or does restrict mean you have some leniency? And that's what's not clear. How do we find that?
And I would just add to it, there was some discussion that the legislation did specifically use the word restrict and not prohibit, which is also part of the discussion. I'm certainly, I can feel...
Oh, it said restrict, but not prohibit.
Correct. That was, you know, that was the word that, that they chose to use in the legislation. I will be happy to check with DOE of whether they intend to release any guidance on this or not, and let me see what I can find out about that.
I appreciate that.
I think I can help with that. So, on Friday afternoon, we got our weekly superintendent message from the Virginia Department of Education, and the headline was "Bell-to-Bell Law of the Land," and it had a picture of Governor Yonkin and members of his, the DOE right underneath the caption. And I'll just read to you a couple of things from this. It says, "In a triumph of bipartisan good sense, Virginia has officially made bell-to-bell cellphone-free education the law of the land. It's not just good policy, but it's also great news for our students, parents, and teachers who are tired of watching young minds be consumed by scrolling instead of sharpening, sharpened by learning. Thanks to Governor Yonkin's Executive Order 33 and early leaders like Copeville City Schools and 104 school divisions to date, with bell-to-bell phone policies in place, General Assembly members heard loud and clear that this policy is working for our students and teachers." It goes on to say, "By banning phones from the opening bell to the closing one, Virginia's made a strong necessary choice to put education and our students first." And then, it concludes to Ms. Melnick, your question. The last statement is, "We will have a special edition next week, which would be this week, for our recent legislation and implementation support. Stay tuned." So, perhaps this week, when we get this update on Thursday or Friday, there's gonna be additional clarification on what is meant by bell-to-bell.
Okay. Yeah, that would be good, because, you know, either we have something to vote on or we don't, right? So, okay. So, okay. I appreciate you. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. So looking next steps, primaries are coming up here in just, oh, we got off there. That's right. Primaries are coming up here just in a week or so, June 17th. As we've talked, all the bills are going into effect on July 1. With those few exceptions, the S O L reform bill being one of them. Get ready, November 4th is big election year in Virginia. As we like to say, there's not a whole lot happening nationally right now. There's one other gubernatorial election and that's happening in New Jersey. Believe it or not, people are less interested in the elections in New Jersey as they are in Virginia. So we get a lot of national attention. And then both the House and the Senate have created special, either subcommittees or committees to look at what the federal action means for Virginia. So right now, we're kind of in the state of unknown. We do know that a reduction in federal workforce will have some impact on the Virginia budget. The Virginia budget relies heavily on non withholdings to balance or withholdings to balance the budget. So that's a hit. What does that mean for the state? We do not yet know. What is some of the other reforms around Medicaid, education, all these things that are happening out there? What they mean for the state is still to be known. The House actually has their special committee coming to Hampton Roads here in a couple of weeks on June 20th. And my understanding is one of that focus of that discussion is specifically going to be around the impact on education. So we will know more. There's a lot of talk about a possible special session once we understand what the impact will be on Virginia, if there is one. That has not yet been scheduled, but the sort of word is potentially end of the summer, beginning of fall as we kind of continue to sort through what the impact will be if there is one that the state needs to respond to one way or the other. I'm going to talk very, very briefly about the elections and then I'll let you get back to, to your other good work. As I mentioned, all 100 members of the House are up for election reelection. All three statewide candidates. As a reminder, we have a one term for your governor. So Governor Youngkin cannot run again. He is terming out. And where there's no senate election. So we, this is a weird off year election for us, even though we do have statewide candidates on the ballot. And so looking at that real quick, former governor, I'm sorry, former representative Abigail Spanberger is running against Lieutenant Governor, current Lieutenant Governor Winsome Sears. The lieutenant governor race, certainly on the Republican side, is been kind of decided with John Reed running. And then the primary, there's a, there's a number of individuals running in that primary. Several current state senators, including Senator Aaron Rouse, as well as former Richmond mayor and others. So that will be decided here in a couple of weeks. And then for the Attorney General, former delegate Jay Jones from Norfolk is running against the Henrico Commis attorney Shannon Taylor. So again, looking at June 17th for that. I threw this map up there just because it was one of the presentations I could find to kind of talk about the House elections. I like to say about elections, much like the weather, they're actually predicted three hours in advance. So really difficult to say what happens. And as we all know, the Virginia electorate is sometimes finicky a little bit, which is why Virginia remains, you know, very much a toss up state. And we've seen a lot of back and forth over the years, which is also why Virginia gets a lot of attention nationally. If you sort of look at the, kind of the raw numbers coming out of November, certainly the, I would say the, the momentum is certainly behind on, behind the Democrats in terms of the, the elections in November. But there's a lot that can happen. A lot can happen between now and November. So certainly not saying, and I don't think anybody is saying that one side or the other is going to win. Very much depends about voter turnout. Virginia is also feels a lot of what is happening at the federal level, good, bad, or indifferent. And so a lot of times people will vote locally based upon how they feel about what the, the federal government is doing as well. So all that remains to be seen. But, but stay tuned. There will be a lot. This is the one piece of advice that I, I do like to give people. This is my only election advice I'll ever give is if you don't want to keep getting the ads, if you go and vote early, you come off the list. So that's the one thing I've got for you. That's the only thing I can give you. So just, just as an F Y I. So. All right. So I will pause there to see if you have any more questions. Thank you again. It is always great to work with you all and look forward to keeping you posted on what's happening as we get through the next couple of months.
Dr. Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And mine is not a question, but just a statement. As you know, Madam Chair and my colleagues on the day, I serve as the Chair of the Legislative Committee. And on my committee is Ms. Rose Dryer, as well as Ms. Melinda Rogers. And I would like to say on behalf of our subcommittee, thank you, Mr. Andrews, because he has worked very closely with us in answering questions. And after we get through our retreat this summer, for whatever comes out of that, that you all will need for us to take back to the committee, I will continue to stay in contact with Mr. Andrews. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to circling back with you all.
Thank you.
Have a great graduation week.
Appreciate it. With that, we are now on to our summer programming update. And we welcome Mr. Thomas Quinn, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members and Dr. Robertson. I am Tom Quinn, Executive Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. With me is Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, Mr. Bobby Jameson, Executive Director of Student Support Services, Ms. Adrian Day, Director of Student Support Services, and Ms. Natalie Meggs, Coordinator of Military Connected and Academic Support Programs. This afternoon, I'll provide you with a high level update of summer learning opportunities for our students. While we no longer have the support of S R funding, which sunset last fall, we are happy to announce we will continue to provide robust learning opportunities, just as we have done in the past, due to the support from our all in, entitled one grants. Summer opportunities will continue to exist for all students in grades K-12 that will offer both remediation and acceleration of student learning, each designed to support a strong start to the 25, 26 school year. As you see on, or as you will find on the overview on this slide, so you will find an overview of the learning opportunities that will be provided for students. As we move through the presentation, we will describe each of these in greater detail. I will give you a moment to familiarize yourself with the list. Some of you may know, we have summer opportunities available for all students registered during the 24, 25 school year. All families will have access to digital learning opportunities we refer to as booths, as indicated on the screen. Families may visit V B Schools' summer school site for more information. On the left, the Q R code links elementary families to a video with directions to assist our students with accessing class link. On the right, the Q R codes provide links for programs offered at the middle and high school levels. With our overview complete, we'll begin by sharing summer learning opportunities available at the elementary level. As stated on the previous screen, V B C P S Summer Learning Boost is available for all students pre K through five. The boost site has been updated to align with the new math and language arts standards. The site contains numeracy and literacy lessons families can access throughout the months of July and August. Students will log in via class link and simple click, they can select the lesson that best reinforces key skills and concepts from the previous school year and provide opportunities for a strong start to 25, 26. Summer learning camps are being held at select sites, including 13 Title One elementary schools and 15 additional elementary schools for a total of 28 sites. The same four and a half hour structure used for summer learning camps last year will again be used this year. We will continue to center our learning on literacy and numeracy instruction. Our team has also enhanced these experiences with increased focus on inquiry, integration and STEM. Partnerships with the community organizations such as the Virginia Beach Public Library will continue title, continue at Title One Summer Learning Camp sites to continue nurturing the joy of reading. Schools who are not implementing summer learning camps are provided with tutoring funds to support summer learning activities designed to serve their student populations. They are continuing to prepare and provide learning opportunities in July. In addition to the opportunities shared on the previous slide, we would like to highlight additional opportunities occurring at schools receiving Title One funding. Current fourth and fifth grade students attending Title One schools will have the opportunity to attend STEM camps where meaningful STEM exploration and learning will be facilitated. The camp will run for three hours daily, immediately following summer learning camp in July. In collaboration with the United Way of Southampton Roads, six Title One schools will offer learning camps for students in kindergarten through third grade. The purpose of this camp is to provide students with enrichment experiences that support literacy, numeracy and science and STEM learning. This camp will run for three hours daily, immediately following summer camp learning in July. And also, as you remember, last year we piloted a fan favorite, better known as Ready, Set, Kindergarten, a program featured in three of our Title One schools. This summer, we are excited to expand this program to a total of six Title One schools. Program will run from August 11th through August 14th and is designed to offer students with little to no pre K experience a soft start to kindergarten. We now shift to the secondary summer learning opportunities available this summer. New for summer 2025 will be a revised summer school format to support students who need a second try at a course to earn promotion. Instead of two sessions, both middle and high school students will experience a single face to face session beginning on July 7th and concluding on July 30th. Recall, this format increased the number of instructional days from 10 to 15 to provide more support. Face to face repeat courses will be provided at the locations indicated on the slide. Students needing two courses will be supported using, utilizing Imagine Learning, an online asynchronous platform. E S L students will be assigned to each of these sites to support English learners enrolled in repeat courses. S O L Fast Track Tutoring is an optional program to support middle and high school students who meet the needs or who must meet the Standards of Learning Verified Credit Diploma criteria. This program is designed for students who pass their classroom instruction and receive credit but did not earn a verified credit because they were unsuccessful on their corresponding S O L assessment. Fast Track is also available for the financial literacy students who need to earn the Wise Financial Literacy Certification. First time courses will be offered through the Virginia Beach Digital Campus and the course session runs from Tuesday, June 17th through Tuesday, August 5th. It is important to note, these courses are full year courses and require lengthier timeframe due to the new course content. Registration for both programs, the face to face repeat session and the first time course offerings opened on Monday, May 5th. Parents will continue to utilize the Redworks Web Store for registration and payment. This is a tiered fee associated, there is a tiered fee associated with the secondary summer school programming, which is dependent on students' verified, free and reduced priced meal eligibility. To provide additional support and strengthen students' foundation of learning, Step Up offerings will be available in the face to face format for rising grade seven to eight students who earned a D as their final grade in 2024, 2025 in English or Math. It is also available for rising grade six students who earned an overall proficiency score of developing proficient on select fifth grade report card standards. Additionally, Boost Opportunities will again be offered in science and math during the summer 2025. These are online asynchronous preparation courses designed to help students build their skills and confidence needed for success in classes they plan to take in the upcoming school year. Available subjects include Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry, Precalculus, Earth Science, Biology, Chemistry and Physics. There is no registration required for Boosts and a link will be provided for students and families by June 17th to access these opportunities via the Canvas platform, which can be found on the summer school website and is accessible to students through class link. Know that both Step Up and Boost Opportunities are offered at no course, no cost. Beritzessan High School will serve as the E S Y site for all middle and high schools and Renaissance will serve as the site for students served by C-7. As a reminder, most students with disabilities receive the majority of their special education services in the general education setting. Therefore, many will have the opportunity to participate in the general education summer programs offered by the school division described throughout this presentation. Some students will receive extended school year services or E S Y and know that consideration of E S Y services are part of the I E P process. These services are the individualized extension of specific special education and related services provided beyond the typical school year. E S Y services may be delivered through a variety of settings and methods. And in short, it is a continuum service and it is the I E P team who collectively determines the setting or method based on the individual need of the student. E S Y dates are July 7th through July 31st, with elementary student hours running from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. and secondary hours being held from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Some students with disabilities will receive classroom based E S Y services at school clustered sites shared on previous slides. As you could see, our robust and our summer learning offerings are ready to go. We would like to close by ensuring our families are aware that all students enrolled in V B C P S during the 24, 25 school year automatically have access to the opportunities discussed in this presentation. As previously mentioned, families interested in the elementary level opportunities may use the Q R code on the left. And on the right, you can use the Q R codes provided for links to programs offered at the middle and high school levels. We do encourage anyone interested to visit the vbschools.com/academics/summerschool for additional details. We thank you for your attention and stand by to answer what questions you may have.
Dr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn and your team for the very thorough presentation. Which schools, Title One schools have the Ready, Set, Kindergarten program?
I will call the future Dr. Silverman up here to answer.
Not Dr. Silverman yet. Working on it. The schools that we have, there's six. It's Bayside Elementary School, Diamond Springs Elementary School, Green Run Elementary School, Pembroke Elementary School, Point of View Elementary School, and Thalia. That's six.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Callen.
Mr. Quinn, you made reference to repeat courses on slide number seven, starting July 7th through July 30. And that's just a period of 18 days. So my curiosity is if I have failed a class and am taking it to repeat it and hopefully pass it, how does the 18 days and however many hours in the classroom, how does that compare with what might be taking place during the course of the regular school year? Are we talking apples to apples or is it apples to oranges as far as classroom time?
I would tell you it's going to be a more focused approach, looking at the students.
I need a comparison of fruit, apples to apples or apples to oranges. So several years ago, the state made an adjustment where if you failed a course, you didn't have to take, the normal requirement is 140 hours. Okay. They reduced that down to 70 hours. So in reducing that down to 70 hours allowed us to reduce the number of days. So the, what the state felt was that you've been through the course one time, you should have enough information from the, the tests that were given to identify where the weaknesses were, to modify the curriculum, to offer the repeat in a sec, in a session that is 70 hours long. So that was a state decision. And that's why the face to face, which is now online, is much longer because it's 140 hours.
So my conclusion from that is the classroom hours of 18 days is approximately 70 hours?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Felton.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn, for this detailed information. My ears popped up when you talked about the pre K and kindergarten is getting started, especially at our Title Ones in elementary schools. My question is transportation. Will there be transportation? And how will this transportation be litigated to all of our students interested in finding that out? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Silverman.
Yeah, Ms. Silverman, but keep saying it. One day. We are providing transportation for all students and families who are selected. It's the students who are being offered the opportunity, it's for their home school. So they will be participating by completing a form. We've worked with school registrars and principals to ensure that they're knowledgeable in offering this opportunity to every kindergarten registration. It's not for every single student. We don't have enough slots for that. It's for interested students. And remember the intention that the school board kind of gave us guidance on last year when we implemented was we're really trying to ensure that students who have little to no pre K experience have the first opportunity so that they can get familiar into the school. It doesn't mean that if you're a pre, a student who's currently in a pre K program outside of our school division or within our school division, that you are not eligible. But we are trying to make sure that we provide that opportunity. And then they provide the information of their home address. And we personally call every family who gets in to provide them the information and to let them know and help guide them on like where their transportation route is. We have to thank the Transportation Department because they're really wonderful in ensuring that they create these routes specially for this program. We have to thank the transportation department because they're really wonderful in ensuring that they create these routes specially for this program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wonder if I could add one more point real quick. Um, just because we have s, s, uh, so many new members on the board. You go back five years in Virginia Beach, here are your choices for the summer. You could take a course, you failed. You could take a new course or you could go to extended school year learning. So we probably served five years ago under that model, which we had used forever. Even in a, even in a busy summer, we might've served three thousand students. With this model right here, we'll touch ten thousand students over the summer. And who not only are looking for enrichment opportunities through boost courses, but summer learning camps, STEM learning camps. And the changes we've made at the way we're offering our, our new courses using online is saving a significant amount of funds for the division as we lost S R funds. So I'm really proud of the work that this group has done because every year they iterate and they make some type of adjustment based upon what needed to be improved from the previous year. But just five years ago, you had three choices and that was it. Not anymore.
Right? Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to all these summer offerings. Um, I know it really benefits our students. So thank you so much. Um, Vice Chair Weems, would you please read the motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board resets in a closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law as set forth in Code of Virginia two dash two da, two dot two dash three seven eleven, Part A, Paragraphs one, two, seven, eight, is amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignments, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or appoint, employees of any public body. And evaluation of performance of departments of schools of hu, public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Any teacher shall be permitted to be present during a closed meeting in which there is a discussion or consideration of a disciplinary matter that involves the teacher and some student and the student involved in the matter is present, provided that the teacher makes a written request to be present to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Nothing in this subdivision, however, shall be construed to authorize a closed meeting by a local governing body or an elected school board to discuss compensation matters that affect the membership of such body or board collectively. Number two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution, institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting if such student's parents or guardians so request in writing and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Number seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or in which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be convinced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public bodies in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Number eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public bodies in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss A, school board internal auditor evaluation, B, decision on student discrimination appeal, C, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Okay, moved by Vice Chair Weems. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open to go into closed session.
Mr. Wire, how do you vote? I can record your vote. Do you vote yea or nay? So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.